...be recognized. For our work session tonight, we have three agenda items, a quick update on the literacy plan, guiding change documents, a review of the superintendent profile, and a review of testing protocols for the COVID testing pilot. So I will turn it over to Director Jody D. St. Huber, who is our Director of Teaching and Learning, to give us an update on the literacy document.
Thank you, Chair Ellenberg. Good evening, Dr. Schultz and members of the board and colleagues and community members. Dr. Bonnie Houck is with me here, and we are providing a quick informational update on the guiding change document of the comprehensive literacy plan. On December 14th, we presented the first draft of the guiding change document to the board for action, and this first draft was approved with further direction that any further discussion surrounding it would be talked about at the Teaching and Learning Board Committee meetings. In Teaching and Learning Board Committee meetings, there were questions and additions that we were asked to explore. So Dr. Houck and I took those questions and additions to our leadership team that has been working on the comprehensive literacy plan, and it did get a little bit more, more content was added, which led to a level of complication that really is maybe out of the realm of the purpose of a guiding change document. And so we just wanted to make sure that we share with you information tonight that the guiding change document, the draft that you have in the board report is page one and two of many more, a total of five pages of the guiding change document. And so we shared that with the Teaching and Learning Committee last Friday. And under the guidance of the Teaching and Learning Committee, we are going to make sure that we review that and tighten it up. There's a lot of good content in it that's leading towards a lot of our work that's happening, but we want to tighten it up and make sure that it allows, allows us to use it as a guiding change document at the highest level. So we wanted to keep the board abreast of that information. And I also just want to make sure that I assure you that this doesn't mean we're, we've been doing the work and we've been working hard on pulling the comprehensive literacy plan together. And so we are preparing to make sure that we're continuing to update you on that and present the phase one of the plan according to our timeline.
Thank you very much. Lenny has his hand up, so I'll turn it over to Lenny.
Just a quick point, which is what we found when we started to review it the last time was that items that are in the context and the reality should have been more in the desired result area. We also found that there was a lot of detail that is probably more appropriate to be in the literacy plan itself. And so the goal was to basically relook at the guiding change document, not change anything substantively, but probably narrow it down so that there are more general statements with the specific ones ending up in the literacy plan itself, with the goal that the literacy plan would continue to be worked on, consistent with the general parameters of the guiding plan that has been adopted. So what the board will see at the next meeting, and probably the next regular meeting, is what I would call a slimmed-down version that would make it easier for the group to look at and say, okay, is the literacy plan consistent with the guiding change document? It's really that simple.
Do we know when this is coming back to the board?
I don't have a question. I'll, I'll, when I come back.
Okay. All right. Yeah, try to do this update as fast as possible.
I'll do that.
So when we talk about it at the next standing meeting, will we have some discussion or will we talk about more at the work session?
Yep, yep.
It's on the 16th that it'll come back to the board, on March 16th.
Oh, it's coming up.
It's coming back on the 16th.
Very soon. Okay, good.
No, March 16th.
I don't think it's March 16th.
I don't think it's March 16th.
No, it's not March 16th. March 16th is a different presentation pertaining arising out of teaching and learning.
Yeah, that's for schools.
Okay. I think it's coming back in April.
Yeah, it is.
April.
Yeah, and then will be the opportunity to have more discussion.
I'll have the data.
They just wanted to update what was going on with the document itself.
Okay, that's good. I have a lot of comments, a lot of questions. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
No. Very helpful.
Yeah, thank you for the update. I appreciate you guys coming here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to our superintendent profile, and we have School Exec Connect here to, to review the superintendent profile and the results from the TUD survey. We're going to approve, hopefully approve this document at the regular board meeting, so this is our opportunity as a board to discuss it. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Dragseth, and before we start, do you mind introducing everyone from your team that's here?
Sure. I'll have them. I'm Ken Dragseth, glad to be here tonight. We'll have both David and Patty, they can introduce themselves, and then we'll go to the next, we'll start up. David, you're muted. Patty, go ahead.
Hi, Patty Phillips, and I can't see myself, but I can see all of you, and you look great. Great to be here.
Thank you.
Dave? You're muted.
Well, that's David.
All right, anyway, that's Dave Kleff. Well, we're glad to be here tonight, and we've got three documents that the board received, one of them being the results of the online survey, the second one being the results of the focus groups that we did about a week ago, and then the last document is the draft superintendent profile that we will use as we go forward to find candidates for this position. So we're going to share the work here tonight, so I'm going to turn it over to Dave Kleff first of all, and Dave is going to go over the online survey information.
Good evening. Yes, I'm unmuted here finally, so thanks for your patience. I'll tell you what really jumped out at us with your survey was the number of participants. We had 1,457 individuals in your district respond to the survey. I don't know about the others, but I think the highest I've ever had before was between eight and 900 on a district. So your constituents really came forward in participating in this. And you have the survey summary sheet, and as you can see, you had a tremendous participation by your parent group, just about 80% of the respondents were parents, about 15% were teachers, 7% community business members, 2% support staff, 2% others, and about a percent and a half were administrators. So your parents were amazing. In a survey, the last survey that we did, 65% of the respondents were parents, so, and that was a really good response. So you can see 80% is amazing, and your parents are, you know, very involved stakeholders in your district, not that you, I'm sure, don't know that. Now, we have just, in each category, just put, for the most part, items that got about 20% or more in the responses. So in, in the first question about what were the top goals for the district, I think what's really interesting is every, pretty much every one of them is dealing with academic achievement, moving students forward, focusing on 21st century skills. You can see strengthening the academic program in the curriculum was just about 50% of your respondents. That's a very significant number. About a little over 40% maintaining high levels of student achievement, just under 40% maintaining programs for all students of all achievement levels and diverse backgrounds, 21st century curriculum, 37%. Wanting students to be safe and engaging students and ensuring that all students are ready for post-secondary were, they were at the bottom of the group of responses that were, again, about 20% or over. So those were seven categories out of 19 that, that the respondents had to choose from. On the next question, where we asked about the greatest strengths of the school district, again, 38% is your staff dedicated and highly competent. That certainly came through in the focus groups as well. High level of a student achievement was next, strong community pride in the schools, supportive and involved parents, amen to that with, with so many participants, teacher quality, supportive community, and then your extracurricular programs. So those were the top seven out of 29 possible responses. The next question was what are the greatest challenges of the district? The one was closing the achievement gaps, then understanding and supporting diversity in the district. Remember, these are perceived challenges, class size, effective board governance, and competition with other districts and schools. So in this category, there were five responses that were in that roughly 20% and above, and again, that would be five out of 29 possible responses. And finally, what are the attributes that your respondents believe are the most important for your next superintendent, for a superintendent to be successful? 36%, the highest one was someone who builds a great team and brings the best out of others. Very close behind that was having a deep understanding of curriculum, curriculum instruction and how students learn. Next, at about 30%, was they felt this person needs to be a strong decision maker who uses data in, in making their decisions. Next, collaborative consensus builder. And then, and we had several that were very close together that we kept in there, recruiting and out and, and support outstanding staff members, hold others accountable, has an inspiring vision for the future, someone who is able to address the needs of our diverse student population, and is child-centered. Again, so those nine responses of about 20% or above were out of 20 possible responses that folks could have chosen. So that is, is the summary of, of the online survey, and, you know, you, you will certainly be receiving the, you know, further details on that as well. Ken?
Okay, thanks. David and Patty, do you want to talk a little bit about the focus group responses?
Sure. We have, you have a 25-page document that outlines the responses from 76 participants in the focus groups. We asked them all the same five questions. We clustered them in 16 groups, and we also had 10 individual interviews with the seven school board members and the teacher union president and the superintendent and the assistant superintendent. One caveat for all of this that we're sharing, due to the sampling methodology, the things we say shouldn't be considered scientifically accurate, I just want to make sure that's clear. The opinions might not reflect the majority of the staff or district, but it certainly reflects the individuals that we spoke with in the focus groups and then the 1,500 some that did the survey. There was a 40 slash 36 split in the 76 respondents. You really leaned heavily on making sure you heard the community, business, and parent voice. So 40 of those respondents were parents and community and business people, and 36 of them were staff internal and included the board. There was a tremendous alignment, and one thing I can say about the ADINA community, both the staff and external and internal stakeholders, there is absolutely no apathy. The people were passionate, they showed up, they wanted to speak for, we allotted 45 minutes, and many of your stakeholders called me or emailed and had more information and more thoughts, and were excited to share them. So what I'm going to do right now is just highlight sort of what Dave did, a summary of what did I hear or what did we hear, the four of us did the focused groups, what did we hear like a drumbeat over and over again? And sometimes it seemed like a broken record, I would always chuckle when I'd hear it again. But when I looked at the, the strength, let's start there, you are a district that's steeped in deep traditions, and there's strong community pride in the schools. We heard about a commitment to academic excellence over and over again. We heard about exceptional staff and engaged students, tremendous parent support and engagement. We heard about parents sharing their time, their talents, and their financial resources with the district. We have a community that's very supportive, we heard that over and over again. They support activities, athletics, fundraisers, bonds, referendums. We heard that it's a resource-rich district and a very well-run financial district. Challenges that we heard were also, a lot of were similar. We heard that there are changing students and changing demographics and a changing community. There's racial issues, change in race, change in culture, change in economics, diversity. We heard from several parents, they termed it different ways, but about a rose-colored mindset of what ADINA was and an unwillingness to change moving into the future. Some called it a feeling like we're still Leave It To Beaver in the 1950s, but I know when we talk to some of your students, they don't even know what we mean by Leave It To Beaver. But there was really a strong sense of that, especially from your community and parents. There was a feeling that a challenge is that innovation seems to want to be squelched due to clinging to this tradition. We love the tradition, yet we have to realize, like Bob Dylan said, the times they are changing. Declining enrollment was a concern mentioned over and over again. Achievement and opportunity gaps were bring up, brought up repeatedly. A perception out there that concerned many, that the perception that academics are slipping, which then leads to a lack of confidence in the district, which ties, and gave me the answer for it, that we need to communicate more and get that strong narrative and tout our strengths. The challenge was communication isn't clear, sometimes it's not concise, and it's not often enough. And we heard that a lot from parents of graduates and parents. Pandemic fatigue came out repeatedly and a concern on what's going to happen when we return to normal, whatever that is. I heard concerns repeatedly, we all did, about a divided and a polarized district, heard that we, we want to hear all families' voices, not just the loudest voices, and a concern that we're not raising global citizens prepared to operate in a diverse world, and that there's a lack of diversity in our staff and inequitable learning models, experiences, and fundraising, depending on which, especially elementary school that the students attend. Goals that I heard and we heard were that we need to move the needle to advance our academic challenges, we need to make sure we can implement with great fidelity that strategic plans from 2020 to 2025. We need to be a district that has a goal of leading the pack in innovation. We need to have better communication to all stakeholders. We need to chart some sort of post-pandemic roadmap. We need to address declining enrollment, make our equity and diversity work a priority, make sure that we have an inclusive culture while at the same time we are embracing high expectations for every single student. We need to close achievement and opportunity gaps, develop and implement a pre-K through 12 comprehensive literacy plan, and elementary voices, especially of parents, stress that return to phonics are more strength, strengthening the phonics program and pre-K to three. Culturally, we want sustaining for staff, need to attract and recruit and retain diverse staff, and we need to have graduates of the ADINA public schools, be global citizens, and they need to work and learn in an environment that's reflective of the world. When we looked at what we're looking for in a leader to help bring some of those things, we heard many of the same words. We need somebody decisive, yet collaborative, an excellent communicator, an active listener, somebody that makes decisions based on input and data, not the loudest voices, a team builder, a team builder that can attract outstanding talent to this district, somebody who's passionate, humble, confident, transparent, a unifier, a community builder, insightful, inspiring, charismatic, visionary, equity vision aligned with high achievement, inclusive, courageous, a strong spine, thick skin, elegant skin, heard all of those, not afraid or threatened by pressure from great people, a strategic thinker who makes strong definitive recommendations to the board, somebody who gets things done, puts students first, committed to ADINA, embraces literacy, diversity, and equity. And finally, I heard we want the LeBron, the Pavarotti of superintendents. So that's just a snippet. You'll have to read the 25 pages to get it, but those were the things that I heard repeated, and I know Dave and Ken did as well in the focus groups. And Lisa.
Thank you, Patty. Lisa Anderson has joined us too, and I didn't introduce her. I think she's not visible right now, but maybe she'll come on. So let me talk a little bit about the draft profile. So the profile that we put together is a combination of the online survey, likewise the focus group material that Patty talked about and Dave talked about in the online one. We try to put together what are the key areas, and we obviously write it in in terms of the different areas, and, you know, there is always a different, there are always ways you can write it and wordsmith it, and I think the main thing for us that I'd like to go over is, you know, what does each category sort of say? And the first one, we talk about inspiring a visionary who confidently leads the implementation of the 2020-2025 strategic plan, you know, embracing its history and facilitating innovative initiatives that will keep it moving forward. I think we heard continually through that, that you've done a lot of work on your, your strategic plan, and that somebody coming in here, you know, needs to embrace that and make it work, not necessarily say we're going to start over. You've done too much work to do that. The second one talks about committed to excellence and academics, closing the opportunity and achievement gaps, and maximize the potential of each student while supporting, which is very important, the whole child and the student's physical, socially, emotional health also. The third one, and I'm not, these are not in any priority order, we just, so don't assume that that, this is number one, number two, number three. The third one talks about a communication, I think Patty talked about that, Dave talked about, someone who has that skill, employs a variety of media opportunities to reach all the audiences in the community and gives accurate and appropriate information. Fourth one talks about the, understands the profound impact of the pandemic, and teachers, the community, the staff, students, and develops with plans, how do you return to, if there is a normal in the fall, how does, and how do you promote any healing or any divisions that occurred because of the difficulty of trying to run education in the last year? And number five talks about being a unifier in terms of polarization, you know, looks at all the sides, but he's going to have to make decisions or she's going to have to make decisions. Got savvy charisma, thick skin enough to move the district forward and knight people as best as they can. The next one talks about working with the board in a shared leadership role, with accountability, and continue to share the vision for the direction of the district. The next one talks about a collaborative consensus builder, someone who listens with an open mind, uses data, is very important, we heard that a number of different times, allow it to be a data-driven decision-making person, input from a variety of different perspectives, and then synthesize, compromise, and craft a vision for the district. And the next one talks about it being an instructional leader, develop, facilitate a strong curriculum, we heard that a lot in the, in the, especially in the focus online survey ones. Again, strong structure program, strong professional development, and again, the need to have a comprehensive pre-K 12 literacy plan that meets the 21st century learning criteria. Heard a lot about the literacy plan and needing to implement that, develop it, change it, whatever it needs to be do. The next one talks about it as a knowledge and skill in fiscal and legal matters. This is absolute requirement, the district has done well both in, in both those areas, and wanting that to continue. The next one talks about cultural, demonstrates cultural competence and experiences working with culturally and racially diverse population, and fosters a school culture that's inclusive, respectful, and responsive, and providing equitable opportunities for all. The next one is a supportive team builder who hires and retains a quality staff, creates a trusty environment that brings out the best in all of these people, interacts with the stakeholders in manners that makes them feel valued, heard, and respected. The next one supports the value of all, it's basically extracurricular, athletic activity, fine arts programs for their positive impact on student achievement and time, teamwork, wellness, quality of life. It's a very strong part of ADINA. And the last one is talks about being a visible and approachable spokesperson and cheerleader for the district, who markets the district, reaches out to staff, students, parents, and community to build mutually beneficial trusting partnerships, so the district is perceived as a top educational choice for students and families. So those are the ones that we put together, as it says on the top, this is a draft, and we, I received some input from people, and if you, I guess what we want to do now is that if there are ones here that you want to fix, in a sense, make, make changes to, or if you feel that it's something you don't want included, or if you've got another one to add, we would do that. This document will be used to match up the qualifications of candidates that we recruit and look at their resumes, all of that as they apply. It will also be used when they come back for the second round of interviews, when the all-day interviews, when they meet with the different subgroups again, focus groups. We will ask the people who are in those subgroups, how do you think this person matches up with the profile? Is this someone you think matches what the board is looking for in a superintendent? And likewise, this becomes a published document so that anybody having interest in the district or wanting what the board is looking for can look at that and say, this is, this is the profile for the new superintendent. So with that, unless anybody, unless either Patty, Dave, or Lisa has anything to add, we're going to turn it over to the board, and we'll ask your questions or take comments or whatever it may be.
Great, thank you very much for that review. And before we move on, I neglected to mention to board members and people on the hall that I did request to have this meeting recorded, so it'd be posted for individuals that are interested in the superintendent search, so I just wanted to let everyone know, and I apologize, I didn't do that before the meeting started. So... So like Dr. Drax said, I think we should just open it up for either questions or comments. And as I said earlier, the hope is to actually approve this at the meeting tonight so they can move forward with their search with this document finalized. So.
I can jump in. So Ken, yeah, Ken, it's Janie. I had Nikki send you some of my comments on this earlier today, so I'll just kind of go through them.
Sure.
So I'll just go bullet by bullet. This was, to me, it was a great profile. I think in the first one, I had added just the word students at the very end, just as a, just another kind of mental reminder of who is, you know, our key stakeholder. I had also thought that the two bullets, the one that starts demonstrates cultural competence, and then the one that is a supportive team builder, those two, I had thought moving those up, I know you said they're not really in any specific order, but in hearing all the feedback about wanting to have our students graduate and be those, you know, world citizens and stuff, and kind of the importance of the equity work in the district, I thought those two deserve to kind of fall in the higher level, just for flow sake too.
Yeah, okay. Okay, the one I have is he demonstrates cultural competence and I missed the other one.
And then the one that says is a supportive team builder who recruits, hires, and retains quality staff who reflect the diversity of our students.
Yep, okay.
And so the cultural competence and experience bullet, I had also wanted to try to find another word that demonstrated a quality in the superintendent that could really advance that work. And so I added the word motivating, so fosters a school culture that is motivating, inclusive, respectful, and responsive. I felt, I added that word only because I felt like it was a good descriptor of the internal motivations that our superintendent would have. And then if we could just put something in there about is a strong advocate for equity, so maybe calling that out in a bold way.
Okay.
Then on the communications bullet, let's see, I just added the word strategic, so it would say focuses on effective communication, listens actively, speaks and writes with a high degree of skill, employs a wide variety of media to reach wider audience, and provides strategic, accurate, and timely information. So I felt strategic was another one of those key, those key attributes that was important to us.
Yes.
And then I think, let's see, the profound impact on the pandemic, I added the word collaboratively in front of develops, so say that they collaboratively develop a plan because I feel like this post-pandemic world is going to need to have really good working relationships between our teachers, our administrators, our special education staff. So that felt to me like an important descriptor to people that we wanted that work to be intentionally collaborative.
Okay.
And then the, down towards the bottom is an instructional leader committed to, I added, committed to continuous improvement, who will facilitate the development of strong curriculum and instructional programs, and then foster job embedded professional development that supports district-wide implementation of strategic initiatives like our comprehensive literacy plan and our district equity work. So I felt like those are two really big strategic initiatives that those skills would be important for.
Okay, I might need to have you send that to me, otherwise I will miss it, you know.
That's, yeah, and those were the comments that I had, otherwise, and it, there was nothing, I didn't see anything wrong with the bullets per se, but what I wanted to do is just really pull out some of those characteristics that I hoped would resonate with the candidates and resonate with you as you're speaking with them, so.
Yep. So I got everything until those last ones and I will, you either, yeah, if you email it to me and during whatever, and we'll put it together before the board meeting here, hopefully. Okay.
And just so you know, we're so receptive to your feedback and we appreciate it. And the four of us did the same thing as we crafted all these pieces because, you know, it's a, it's a journey and it's a process and it's collaborative, like, just like we want our leaders to be, teamwork, thank you.
Oh, and you know what? I think I forgot one, actually, now that I think about it. So in the very first bullet, it just reminded me of it. I took out rich history and had it just say embrace Edina's tradition, because I don't know that we necessarily want to embrace all parts of our history, but we do want to embrace that tradition of academic excellence, because that's, you know, history is in the past, but the part that we fostered and we continue to foster that academic excellence, to me, felt like the most important part, so.
Sounds good.
I'll be done.
Or Julie, go ahead.
Sure, I can go. I had sent some comments over to, hi, thanks so much for this presentation. Thanks for all the work and getting all the feedback from our community and stakeholders. I know it's been a lot and a fast, quick, but I really appreciate it. One of the things that struck me in listening to the feedback again tonight is that it really is aligned with our strategic plan, a lot of the feedback. So as a board member with that hat on, from a strategic planning standpoint, I feel like we're, we're in good shape for, for what's ahead. I had some crossover with some of the same bullets that Janie gave feedback on, so you can, you know, I think we were close on, at least in my view, on some things. One of the things that I, I thought this was a great, a great capture of what the feedback was. I agree with Janie's edit about getting rid of the rich history piece, but more the tradition and what we stand for and who we are as a community. I think that was, that's a good change. The second bullet we talk about is committed to excellence and academics, and I would, I would recommend we add in, is committed to excellence with an equitable lens while foreclosing the opportunity and achievement gaps. You know, we don't, I know these aren't in a specific order, but I think that's a really important look and a reminder that it's a top priority in our district. The third bullet we talk about, we talk about.
Julie, can you read what that sentence would say?
Sure. Is committed to excellence in academics with an equitable lens in closing opportunity and achievement gaps, and then all the rest.
Okay.
The bullet under, with communication, I think that addition that Janie added with the strategic in there, I think one of the things that I heard and all, and I read, I did read through the feedback, is I think the new superintendent needs to understand the need for the communication, him driving that, so I would add that in, under employs a wide variety of media, understanding the need to reach wider audiences.
Okay.
The next piece in here, I thought bullet number one, two, three, four, oh wait, take that back, bullet number four, I thought the second line, the second part of bullet number four, to me, felt very tactical and not necessarily a skill set. And so I, and I, if I'm alone on this, that's okay, you guys can ignore me, but I felt like develops with others a plan to return students to appropriate learning models, like I want a, I would want a superintendent to understand the impact, the impact that this has had, and understanding that, and then that's part of, I'm not saying this the right way I want to. I would just get rid of the second line. It feels very tactical to me.
Okay, the second line being what, again?
Being, just the second part, develops with others plans to return students to appropriate learning models. I, it read to me kind of funny that we don't have consensus on where we are as a district and we've given, we've given very clear direction from the board of what that looks like and I, it just felt like a weird, kind of, it read to me a little bit weird and tactical. But if I'm alone on that as a board member, you guys can ignore what I just said. That's fine.
I'm just, so as I understand it right now, you would just have, understands the.
The profound.
A profound effect of the pandemic on students, teachers, and the community, and then it would be, and it would end?
And then it would end, right.
So what other board, what's the board's view on that?
Well, I wonder what, so you want the person to understand the impact and you want them, I, I kind of feel like there should be a next part. I agree that I don't, you know, maybe, maybe it could be worded to say that, that you want them to understand the impact and you want them to work collaboratively to like meet the changing needs or, you know what I mean? Like maybe it's support intervention, like those are the things that I'm.
That's, that's me.
Yeah, it's more than just returning to an appropriate learning model, it's supporting the students where they're at post-pandemic.
That's, that's me, reads very differently what Janie just said than the way that this sentence is written. Because I, I think it's an understanding of the complex place that we are, that the students are in, and be able to address their needs. So I don't know if any other board members have feedback on that one point, but we can hold on until others give feedback if you'd like.
Janie, what did yours say?
What I just said?
Yep.
Let me type it out.
Okay.
And then just another point, I thought one, two, three, four, bullet number five and seven, I actually thought we could combine the two or get rid of number five and just do number seven. I felt like they, they said very similar messages.
Which ones are those?
Number five and number seven. One starts with is a proactive unifier, and the other one starts with is a decisive, yet collaborative consensus builder.
I had that exact same feedback.
Okay.
Yeah, I felt they were similar, but said in a different way.
Yeah, I actually liked the second one, is a decisive, yet collaborative consensus builder. I thought that was a great skill, so I would get rid of bullet number five.
Is that a consensus of the board?
Yeah, I was gonna say, what does the rest of the board think about combining five and seven?
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
I like five because it talks about polarization, and I think we have to be very mindful of not being polarizing. So if we could put that phrase into seven, I'd be fine with it.
Could we do like, is a decisive, yet collaborative consensus builder who in times of polarization, and then go, would that, would that we're going to?
Yeah, that's a good edit, that's a good change.
All right, I got that. So I've got, for number seven, I've got, is a decisive, yet collaborative consensus builder in a time of polarization, who listens, blah, 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 you know?
Yeah.
Is that right?
I think in, I have a Google Doc. I think in, Ken, I think it's in times, not in a time.
Yeah, it's in times. Did I not?
I might have not heard it correctly, sorry.
Yep, in times, yep.
Right, the issue with that is that they should be a decisive, collaborative consensus builder at all times.
That's right.
Simply in times of potential polarization. So I would be cautious about that.
That's a really good point, Lenny.
Could you say like?
I think that's why we had the other one, why we had the unifier. It was a means of uniting people rather than dividing them. It was more than just building consensus on what should we have for a literacy curriculum. There's some great polarization in the world today, and Edina's normal, you're a microcosm of the world, and there's some polarizing thoughts and ideas, and our feeling was just if we had that more focus on, yes, if you can't get consensus, can you at least start the conversation by finding common ground? What do we all agree with? And I don't know, that, so it's a little different stance, but I understand maybe you just want to do the other one, but maybe we can incorporate that somehow into the second one as well.
Patty, to your concept of the word unity, I like unity in the seventh bullet, some kind of steering us in that direction, or as in the fifth, as in the fifth bullet, but not in the seventh.
What, what if we did this, that last line, Owen, where it said, the last line of bullet number five starts with finding common ground, comma, and focusing on what unites people rather than what divides them? What if we just hook that on to the end of bullet number seven?
I like that.
And craft a shared vision before taking action, finding common ground and focusing on what unites people rather than what divides them.
I like that. Yep.
What do you guys think of the polarization part?
I think Lenny's got a really good point, that we want them to be a unifier at all times, but I think the polarization word is kind of what makes it seem like it's a one moment. But I like the, what unites people rather than divides them, I think says the same thing, but Owen, it's your feedback, so.
I try to get the negatives out, the polarizations are negative, and if you put the positive in, which is the opposite of polarizing, then I think the goal's accomplished.
So let me read the bullet as I have it now.
Yeah, read it.
I have, is a decisive, yet collaborative consensus builder who listens with an open mind, uses data and input from those with multiple or diverse perspectives, and is able to synthesize, compromise, and craft a shared vision before taking action, finding common ground, and focusing on what unites people rather than what divides them.
All right, got it.
Do, are you guys okay with that?
Yeah, I think it's great.
What about Lenny and Ellen and Matt?
I'm finding that.
Okay.
I only have, I have two more other quick things. So the other one is the bullet between there, works well with the board in a shared leadership role. I thought we could add the word accountability, that seemed to pop up a lot in the feedback.
Good.
So works well with the board in a shared leadership and accountability role, that shared accountability for the success of the district, our students.
I like that.
You want accountability first before leadership or after?
I think you can go first.
Okay. Yep. Thank you.
All right.
And then the last bullet on the page, I agreed with Janie's change about that the, ensure the implementation, she had said some, I think she's sending it, but about the implementation of the entire strategic plan, including the comprehensive literacy and the equity work is kind of the two top priorities in the district right now. I thought that was a great change.
I like that. Janie, be sure to send it to us, I don't think any of.
Yeah, I got it, great.
Okay, we'll get it.
And then the only other thing that I thought would be important to add in here, which is, it kind of bubbled up through the feedback, was just looking at the whole student from, you know, our early learning center, our community education programs, and all the way through that kind of zero, all the way up to 12, 12th grade when they graduate, that big picture of the student from early, that's part of our, you know, I think that's an important piece. I don't know where it goes, but I, I think someone, a superintendent understanding that the whole picture is an important, the whole, yeah.
We, if you look to bullet number two, we have about simultaneously supporting the whole child and his or her, so you could tag something more in there.
Yeah. Yeah, from birth through graduation or from, I mean.
Yeah, from birth to, yeah.
You know, like really that folk, that understanding of the continuum, that's a big part of our strat plan too, is that focus on the pre-K and the early learning group, so.
Okay.
Sounds good.
So what would that be? Would it be birth through graduation or because we also have, or you could say?
Yeah, throughout their life, throughout their life or something like that?
Yeah, well, you could, I mean, we refer to them as lifelong learners, you know, but I think, I think calling out from birth on up, because we have programming to support that, I think is an important piece in here.
Okay.
So we got.
Because we provide education for older people.
Yeah.
So we have birth to graduation right now. Did you want to change birth to something else?
Unless, I think we should say birth to graduation since. Unless, I, I think we should say birth to graduation since birth is the whole child.
Yeah.
I think if we want to talk about.
Yeah, we're not talking about.
Education, then that should be a different bullet point.
Yep, okay.
Yeah. I agree. Okay, thank you. Um, and that's, those are my, that's my feedback. I agree with a lot of the other edits that Janie has set out. I don't know if anyone else gave feedback on that. Thank you.
Uh, Matt or Owen, so what's your other?
I'm gonna go because you got that sound machine next to you right now.
I know.
Sure. So can you guys hear me from back here?
Go ahead.
Okay, great. So, um, I think very simply the, uh. Comments that just got provided and shared, and I'm sure Owen and Alan and Eric will have more. Just, I, I'm gonna stay a bit at high level because they were all great changes. The, the feedback you got from the community is plentiful. That's awesome engagement over a thousand people. You got a good diverse group of people giving you feedback too. I think that, um. I think that the most important thing in my mind is that the person in this role, that he or she or, you know, whoever takes the role that they have. I discussed this with David on the call. This might be a weird concept of the way to talk about it, but the way I think about things is sometimes in business titles. And there's a different role between being the CEO of an organization versus being the president, based on the way I think about it. And so in my mind, the CEO of the organization is fully responsible for the algorithmic thinking on a long-term basis. Communicating the message clearly, basically selling the vision. So. Whether or not we do or don't have declining academics versus tradition or history. We need to unify everyone. I'm trying to pull these words in. We need to make sure that everyone's thinking together about where we're going next. And a CEO does that. They stand out, they project, they pull the community together and they're unified in an important role. The role of a president puts the day-to-day function that can be a three, six, nine, 12-month role. And in that respect, you're trying to figure out, do your teachers have the data they need to make decisions in the classroom? Do the parents and teachers, uh, community members have the data they need to know if they send their kids back for hybrid? There are two slightly different roles. Um, but I think having somebody that has some level of experience, understanding both and incorporating that into the superintendent level. Is really important in my personal opinion. Um, I'm not level set or dead set of the person having already been a superintendent. That's often a question that comes up. We could all have several different opinions on that. Um, but just to share my feedback on the document. I think it's gonna be able to help bring forward candidates that carry, you know, what the more than a thousand people wanted. What the seven board members wanted, what the staff and administration community wanted. So. I think it's a great document. Every change thus far, I think is a good one. Um, you know, we do have an assistant superintendent here also in the role, so. That CEO slash president is coming in, can figure out which roles to filter and which ones to take on him or herself, but I just think. It's, uh, it's really important when you want to be able to think. About what are you doing today and now, and how does that apply to the future and then how do you communicate it? Uh, that, that's what I personally was looking for, as well as I think I said in every single way that I can, financial acumen. So I know that's been sprinkled throughout the document, but for me, the way that we analyze our resources, the thing about them today and tomorrow. Is the most critical path. Because the school board, like community input and from staff and administration and teacher input. Put together what I think is a really good strategic plan. And as Julie said, a lot of elements are here in this document. But given that, to stay on course and be able then decide, can we afford a magnet program? Can we afford a second language? Can we afford to bring in plenty of different pairs? Can we afford different things? That's, that, that, that person needs to understand some of financial applications and, and have some readiness there. So. Um, that's why I think it was important. I think it's a good document. I think you guys did good work and I'm excited about next steps.
Thank you. Uh, Matt or Lenny?
I just went.
Oh, Owen, I can't read it, Owen, but I said Matt, I'm sorry.
Um, with the paper. I, um, I'm loving words that I've seen coming out. Academic excellence in the first bullet. Um, academics again in the second, closing the achievement gap, third bullet. Effective communicator, fourth, underscoring the pandemic, then we jump down to six. Um, I have a comment I want to come back to about on six. I'll hold off. Um, I'm liking eight, an instructional leader. That's the sharp edge of the night. That's what we're all about. And I think that's a room to call out reinforced. I want to reinforce what Matt was just talking about. Fiscal savvy and knowledge. That's so crucial, maintaining that triple A bond, boundary. Um. I want to show that the, while we're talking about strong athletics and so forth, engagement. Um, I'm not seeking the word engagement, but that is all about student engagement. And I think especially in the pandemic where kids are getting less and less engagement. Uh, underscore that. We've got such fantastic programs, BAM, sports, DECA, robotics, debate, what have you. Those draw people to the district and keep them here, keep the kids engaged. That's, that's excellent.
Do you want to try to find a way to put the word engage in?
I, I think it would be really good to put the word engagement.
Do you, Owen, what do you think about, um, under the one that says demonstrates cultural competence and experience? Where, where it says and fosters a school culture, I have that is motivating, inclusive, respectful, and responsive. Do you think engaging, you could say it fosters a school culture that is engaging?
I see that as going in a different direction.
Okay.
Uh, I see this call out in the second election bullet is specifically about engagement.
Okay.
Um.
Where would you put it then?
You could say supports the value of engagement in.
Yeah.
Right at the, right at the beginning.
Yes.
Support the value of engagement.
Yep.
Because it's huge for us.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
So I would say student engagement.
Yes.
Isn't groups a wonderful thing?
With what?
Isn't groups think a wonderful?
Group think, yes.
Especially now we're in the same room too.
Really exciting.
Um, and then a last bullet, I love the cheerleader. Um, and I think that's an excellent word. There's two other comments to make. One of which is we're really talking about diversity. That is a, that's a central tenet of our strategic plan. One of the reasons why unity was so important to me is when diversity and equity training becomes identity politics, we're talking polarization. And so I really like the, the free word unity in there. Um, so I don't have a, I don't have any additions to make, but I just want to, uh, put a punctuation mark in there for that. And then the sixth bullet, I wanted to, uh, pull off here and talk about this works well with, love that. In a shared leadership role. Um, I don't like the word shared because we're, we're actually the leaders, the seven of us collectively. Are the leaders and the superintendent follows our lead. And so I'm not too excited about the word shared in that context. Um, so I don't know what others think about that. Um.
Do you want to drop it or not?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, you do. Does anybody, is that agreeable or is that?
No, I think that we should leave it in there. I think that the idea that the school board leads on its own is incorrect. You know, Owen and I have always had this disagreement from day one, respectfully, I will say. Um, but it's, my view on this is that we look for our superintendents to provide leadership. And that we're going to share the responsibilities and the duties that go along with that. We'll look to him or her or they for guidance. And we're not going to do it on our own. So to me, it is a shared leadership role.
And yes, Lenny and I have had this philosophical debate ever since I've been on for three and a half years. I do like the word share in the second part of that sentence while continuing to share. His or her vision for the direction because we'd be foolish to not take the wisdom that this individual will have for us. And to learn from the new superintendent. So to me, that is critical. Um, so that's a distinction I'd make. And, uh, so apart from that, there's many, many things I like about, uh, the strat.
Um.
Did we come to the conclusion on, just to, did we, um, did we come to the conclusion to leave shared in or to take it out?
I, I'll, I'll jump in for a second. I thought, when, because I added the word accountability in there, right? In that same spot. Everything else in the document, the person we're looking for, we're asking for someone who's a consensus builder, who is a collaborator. So then it would make sense that we would have someone who would understand that shared responsibility. It doesn't mean that. It doesn't mean that we don't provide oversight. I, we want them to understand that we're all in this for the students together. So I took, I, I think it's actually. Consistent with the other attributes that we're looking for. So that's how I took it. I would vote to keep it in.
Yeah, I think we're keeping it. I guess I didn't read it the same way. You did, Owen, that it was talking about like a hierarchy. It was more talking about. It's our shared responsibility to guide their district.
Yeah.
And I.
Yeah, that was what I.
That was the, that was the. That's how I read it, um, less than, um, we need to reiterate that the board is the ultimate, that's the way that it was heard. Um, but that's my feedback.
Okay.
I'm excited.
Matt, you have another opinion?
Yeah. Oh, oops, sorry.
No, I, I don't.
Okay.
I don't agree with the same person either way. I won't, I will.
Yeah, I agree.
So Ken?
Yes.
Uh, I want to address Matt and your, uh, discussion about the, the, uh. The bullet on fiscal. I just did a little rewrite of that to just see what you would think.
Hmm.
Um. Displays, uh, fiscal savvy and discipline. And has knowledge of legal matters affecting the district.
Uh, what's the second half of that sentence again? Has knowledge of legal matters affecting the district?
Right.
I would say can, 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 can interpret legal matters. If we're getting into wordsmithing, otherwise that sounds good because knowledge would mean that they're aware of everything. Interpret would mean their ability to analyze, but otherwise it sounds good.
Okay.
It's a reading.
The interviews, if we ask them, if they can read a balance sheet and they can't, it's gonna be a problem. So. However, people aren't presented, I think expertise sounds comprehensive.
So it would read, uh, I can send it to you, Ken, but it would say. Displays fiscal savvy and discipline. And can interpret legal matters affecting the district.
All right, got it. Thank you.
I think that sounds good if others are comfortable, that kind of.
That's great. That gives, that's a bit more of a.
I think that's good.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you, guys.
I saw, uh, Ellen had her hand up, so I just wanted to.
So, but, but before we leave this, I'm not sure that superintendents interpret legal matters. They may understand them. They should be able to identify when a legal matter arises and then seek counsel. But I'm not sure that, uh, superintendents interpret legal matters. So I would, I think understand might be better.
Okay.
Yeah, I care. I think that's a good.
I think, I think, I think the lawyer's family amendment, it makes sense.
I think we just want to solve all legal, legal matters to know.
I, I, I interpret that as correct.
Ellen, you have your hand raised. I wasn't, wanted to make sure you had a chance to.
So what did we say, David? Interpret or understand or?
Understand.
Okay.
Understand.
Are you there, Ellen? Well, why don't I go to Lenny and then hopefully. Oh. Go ahead.
Now can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
So you just went back on mute.
Um.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, here's, so my, I, I want to, I want to thank, um, the consultants. I do. Um. Yeah, she's saying. Okay, so I, I just wanted to thank the consultants for a great job. I thought. I, I, I really liked the wording on this and I appreciate the, uh, with my, uh, colleagues. So I can still hear me?
Yeah, it's a little inside at times, but yes.
Okay, I just, this is going to end thing. And it is to the sentence understands the impact of the.
Pandemic.
Eliminated that one. No, not that one, excuse me. Number four.
No, no, to understand the. Profound impact of the pandemic. On students. Just add, lead the dis. Lead the district through uncharted territory.
That's a good change, Ellen. She said to understand and lead the district through uncharted territory. So instead of the.
Understands and leads, no, we got, I'm missing some. Understands profound impact of this. Impact on students and then after that is what?
So I'll tell you the way it reads.
Through chartered territory.
Oh, the way the bullet reads now, because Janie has an edit as well, is, sorry, I have something in my eye at the same time. Um, understands the profound impact of the pandemic on students, teachers, the community. And the community and collaboratively works to address the unique and ongoing academic and social emotional needs that may arise.
Oh.
So, um. I'm trying to figure out the better, best place to.
That isn't what I have, but. Um, we need to.
We'll get the, we'll send you the document, Ken.
Sounds good.
I'm typing it all in, so I'll just send it to you.
All right, you got my email, so you can send it. Yep.
Yep.
Great.
Actually Nikki will send it to you.
Yep, sounds good. Will we do that one? All right. Hang on.
So I just want to make, so do people want to add the uncharted territory? If so, where would we put it?
I didn't realize the last part of that, so that makes more sense. I was trying to.
You were trying to wrap up the.
I was trying to wrap up the sentence, so.
Ellen, did you like the way the new bullet read? Or do you want to still add uncharted territory?
She's having technical issues.
Yeah.
I think she's traveling.
Yeah, it looks like that.
Well, I, I wrote that down so we could figure it out. Um, Lenny, do you want to go and Ellen, I, oh. Lenny, why don't you go ahead and go?
So lucky for everybody, the comments that I have have been incorporated through the various changes that people have already adjusted.
Thank you, Lenny. There you go.
So I have no feedback either because I, I like the comments that were made. Um, I just wanted, I, Ellen, could you try it one more time if you could?
Alternatively, Ellen, if you could text one of us real quick.
Yeah.
We could read it.
Yep.
We'll waive the rule against texting for the moment.
Um, okay.
Link twice if you're going to.
Well, I'm sure, and Ellen, if you're on, if you want to text or if you want to email Ken or. Somebody, if you did have additional changes and then those could potentially be incorporated before we go on it. But, um, I, I vote Janie and I have logged all the changes. Oh.
Thanks. No, I, um, I just want to say, if you can hear me, that I think that it's a really fine and strong document. Um, and I just, um, my point about trying to say that we're looking for a leader that can lead through uncharted territory. Um, that is a different skill set. That is not mentioned, um, in the, in the document. And, um, and it's, and it takes a different type of leader to be able to, to, um, not just execute a plan. Um, but to actually build one, um, in different types of environments. And I think that this, uh, and isn't going to be the only. That will have leadership that can, um, kind of, um, capture that essence. And so, um, depending on whether the rest of the board thinks that that's a way to say that. Um, and if that's a, a type of, uh, leader that they want. To try to capture that type of, um, of person. My only other two comments would be that in this time, um, the word trust keeps bubbling up in my mind. Um, for giving confidence to the community, um, and for. for giving confidence to the community, um, and for, um, uh, giving confidence to the staff that, um, they have this, that we are this district, that we are, is strong and, um, and, and a competent district. And I think to highlight that a little bit more strongly, I know there's a word trust once in there, it's kind of big. But a, a leader that is a trust builder, that might be something that I would add. And then the last thing would be, um, I'd like to make sure that it's clear that we want somebody who can get things done. So, and I'm not sure exactly if that is also an element that's in here. And those are, those are my only comments.
Yeah, it's under decisive, I think, um.
Well, the, the first bullet talks about confidently lead. So that's one of the words that Ellen used, which is to be, to generate confidence.
We also have creates a trusting environment.
And.
Do we do it again?
And then the last one we have is a visible and approachable spokesperson and builds trusting partnerships. But if you wanted to add some more adjectives to the very last bullet, you could say is a visible, trusted, transparent, and approachable spokesperson. We heard all of that a multitude of times.
Sounds good.
But then you're repeating, you have trusted partnerships in the end, but the trusting person would build, um, trusting part. Sometimes I hate using the same word in the sentence twice or a form of it.
Did you say is a visible?
Trusted.
Trusted.
Trusted, transparent, that's kind of, you know, if someone's transparent, they're telling you the same thing they're telling everybody else, you know? You can, they're authentic.
Are you guys okay with that update?
Yeah, just, they were trusting before partnerships, and, and that should, uh, allow Patty to sleep better tonight.
I think I captured all of that.
You know, we're engaged in these bullets, but we're not married to them. So when you add things.
There you go.
We appreciate you.
Yeah, that's, that's good, good, good discussion, so.
So I like it with the updates. I think, um, Ken, if you guys have a chance to take a look at it, and you could send the draft back to us.
Right, that's exactly what we'll do. When we get off here, we will, uh, convene the four of us, and we'll see that we're, we have the, uh, the, the appropriate, uh, changes. And then we'll redo it and send it back to you by seven o'clock, so.
Yeah, yes, by seven o'clock.
Nikki shared the document that we've been typing into with you, so you should have everything that we've been scribing.
Yeah, I know. I'll, I'll look on my emails when I get off here and pull them up, so.
Okay.
All right, we hope we get it right for you. If not.
Oh, you will. I have confidence, I have confidence.
Hey, well, you guys did great, so we appreciate it. And, uh, if you're, if you're done with us, we'll go to work on it.
Great.
Thank you.
You're back.
Thank you guys.
See you later.
Okay, um, so the next on the agenda is, um, to review the consent and protocols for student testing. So I don't know, let's make sure John is back on the call. John Schultz. Uh, Matt or Julie, do you guys want to start the conversation about this, and I can make sure, um, John is back on? It basically was just an opportunity for the board, if they have any questions or comments about those three documents, to give them right now.
Sure, uh, you want, you want to see if John's available, or?
Yeah, I'm gonna text him.
Okay.
I think we should wait till he gets here, but.
Yeah.
Can we wait two minutes?
Yep.
Are you okay waiting two minutes till John comes back in? All the robot people on the screen.
Lenny's the only one that we can see.
He's talking to you too. We're looking at you, Lenny, all of us.
Excellent.
We don't hear any music.
I don't know what this theory is, but I know it was a rehearsal at seven forty-five, so we're obviously saving it for the main meeting.
Oh, good. The community will appreciate that.
Well, Ellen texted me, and she said she's having connection problems.
Oh, shoot. I wonder where she is. Ellen, I, that, I just texted everybody when I was, I, I wasn't getting ahold of John. So then I did text both you and Lenny saying, can you try to find the, um, the phone connect? But I think things are stabilizing, at least in the, the, um, I hear. Hopefully I can stay on this way.
Okay.
Do you still need the phone number, Ellen? No, no, I have it, thanks.
Okay.
Oh, he's on.
Oh, there we go. Yeah, so John, we just, uh, are moving on to the consent.
Okay.
Assent and protocol for, and we wanted to make sure you were on if there were.
All right.
Questions or comments.
Yeah, so, you want me to just pick off for a second, or?
Yeah, go ahead.
Go for it.
So yeah, just, just quickly, um, as a, as a small preamble, at least for me. Uh, I'm excited that we're moving into implementation phase, uh, after the approval on Friday. These additional documents reference how on day one, or day five, or day ten, we're approaching the overall process. The protocols and documents are mostly built by United with some influence from us, because again, being a public entity, we had to make sure these things worked for us. Uh, but, uh, having been a biotech CEO for, you know, almost a decade in different capacities and leadership, this protocols and consent in a sense are generally followed and dictated by rule of law and by HIPAA compliance and other patient identifying information. So, uh, the board had asked to have more clarity around those, once those are completed or in near final forms, who brought those back to this work session. Uh, but again, those could change a bit. We could change sizes of pools or timing of testing, but on day one or on day, again, week one, this is the way that it's planned to roll out. So, I'll pause there and, and let Julie go more into the documents with John here to help, but, uh, United's leaned in a big way. A lot of the community and volunteers have leaned in a big way, and so I'm just really excited that I think this is a really meaningful way to keep our kids in the, in the schools. Get them back in the schools and keep them there. I have friends in Minneapolis that had one kid sick on a forty-person school bus, and the whole bus was home for weeks. So I, I think this is a great tool for us to have in our tool belt.
Um, yeah, thanks, Matt. So, um, just to reiterate what Matt said, these are additional documents U H G did produce, um, most of them with input, input from E P S, and of course, legal, um, from our side. Um, I think one thing I just wanted to, I thought would be a, and John, um, interrupt me if I'm, um, if I am going in the wrong direction here, but I just wanted to kind of give a quick overview, so that you understand, um, and the board understands kind of how this will roll out. Think it's really important. So through U H G, we have a team of volunteers that are going to be doing the pooled testing part of this. I volunteered as a, as a U H G volunteer to help be a lead there. So that's why my engagement with this is now moving from board member to actual volunteer with U H G. Um, we've had a tremendous amount of support from the community. Um, we have over thirty-five volunteers that have immediately stepped up to say, what can I do to help? They're all being trained by U H G, um, vetted through Edina Public Schools with background checks, and making sure that we have a really good system for the pool testing piece of this. I think that's an important thing as a board, I know, as a board member, to make sure that we're not, I, I, you know, the feedback from last week was just talking about making sure we're not interrupting operations at the school. Um, and I feel very confident with our partnership with U H G that we are, we have a really good plan in place to not, to do that. We're working really closely with the principals at all the sites to make sure that, um, the students have, um, are, are being funneled through before school, that it's not disrupting their flow in, that they have a bit of privacy in doing so. I think that's another really important piece. The other part is, as this rolls out, and U H G has told us to us from the beginning of the conversations that we had back, starting in December, it will look really clunky the first week. It's gonna look clunky. Um, the volunteers know that, U H G knows that. We're doing training this week, tomorrow, for the pool testing, and then training for the, um, optional, um, diagnostic test that students can do, um, through school, um, through the school. If they are in a positive pool, that will happen on Wednesday. So I feel like our ducks are getting in a row, um, getting us there. The other thing is then Thursday, this Thursday, we have possibility that if students sign up, registration will open on Wednesday, um, with some communication going out, um, on Tuesday to families. We could have some students actually start testing on Thursday, a very, very small group. We are trying to be really smart about not overwhelming the system, so it will only be at the high school. It will be a small group. Once we get the process nailed down, then it will roll out to the middle schools the following week, again with another small group. Um, that's the overall, um, kind of, um, from a logistics standpoint that I think is really important. There's a really in-depth F A Q that we are continuing to add to. If anyone has questions here, or you think of something later, send an email to Mary Whitey. And, um, I know she's going to be continuously working on that as this program goes through, through the end of the year. Um, that's a really important piece, I think, for families, to address different concerns that they would have, or questions, um. Anything else that you guys, I, I feel like that's a pretty good overview on, on kind of the logistics standpoint of things. Um, there's, you know, one of the things I, that we talked about too, is with students and the student experience through this, and that's the most important piece. And at any time, if a student signs up and says, you know what, I don't want to do this, they don't have to do that. That is the beauty of this whole program. You know, testing is already going on in our community, in a, in, in the state. Um, this is an unbelievable convenience, and it actually is with super fast turnaround results, very convenient for families and for students. And it makes it so that they can come in, get tested, and, and go on their day. So it's just, it helps keep our school, hopefully, open. And that is the goal here. That's what we're trying to show, is that with all this testing, um, with the students and the ongoing part of it, is that we actually can keep the doors open. Um, you know, we have their, COVID is still existent. I wish we could, you know, make COVID go away, but it's, the facts will say and the data supports, COVID is still impacting our, in, our ability to have students in person in our buildings. We have, you know, classes that are on quarantine. Um, so that's kind of my.
Right now?
My plug. Right now we do. And so, um, this is a hope, um, that this will make a big impact. And the research from, and the results that are coming out of the Washington International School is just that. In fact, they're able to bring more students back in now because of the testing. They shared with us, um, that they're really seeing an uptick with students that want to be back in person. And, um, I think that's another really key data point that we can go off of here. Um, so, that's just a very brief overview. But John, did I miss anything there?
No, I think, uh, you know, we still, uh, continue, work closely with, uh, United Health Group. They're wonderful to work with. They've been, uh, very, very cooperative. Um, they think through all the, all those protocols that it takes to, uh, bring students together and, um, and I think the principals and our health staff is excited to have this mitigation, um, uh, protocol in place. Uh, that's another layer of protection for our kids and families. So I think it's a good place. I think you described it very well, Julie. And one last comment there too, is that as Julie said, it'll be a bit clunky, so on recorded TV or YouTube or whatever, we're trying to make sure that's understood. Anytime we roll something out in new settings, it's a bit clunky at first. But literally, we have volunteers who are physicians. We're very, very lucky for that status. We have the seventh largest company in the U S that's doing this. This is not a group that is trying to do it for any profit margin or any motive. We're literally paying for just the disposables from CARES Act funding. It's a three hundred and fifty billion dollar company. So we've gone through the process of interviewing and looking at who is the best partner, who's been doing this for the right reasons, who will stand by the results. So, if in a month, suddenly there's a thirty-second breath test that comes out of Belgium, and that's approved by the FDA, they'll be the first ones to get access to it. And if in three months, COVID's gone, and it's gone, and we stop testing. But the process is, this subcommittee and this board, um, decided four or five months ago to try to put more tools in the toolkit to get kids in school and keep them there. And that's exactly what we're doing. So net-net, this process continues to show across other schools in the country that testing keeps more kids in school and gets more kids in school. So, um, open it up to questions there, Julie and John, if you go, if that's a good time.
No, I think that's good. Anyone have any questions?
I've got two questions.
Sure.
So, I just wanted to make sure I heard you correctly. So the F A Q is a living document, so that's something that as it gets rolled out, we can add to that. So if parents have questions, we can, okay, I just want to make sure I heard that correctly. Um, and then can I ask you a question about one of the documents?
Sure.
So the student assignment form? I was wondering in the top paragraph if there was a way, or, or maybe it's intentionally not in here, to say a little bit about why you would have COVID testing in a school, right? So to say to the kids, so we say to the kids that it's being done because you want to find out how to do COVID testing in school, but if it's possible to add a why to students, I thought that would be beneficial for students to feel a part of it.
That's a great question. I will bring that back.
Okay, and it may intentionally not be in there, I'm not sure.
Yep. It's a good suggestion.
Yeah, we can give that feedback.
And then, oh, last question. I just wanted to clarify, in the protocols, it was mentioned, but I just wanted to say another one of these say it out loud things. You, the pooled testing specimens are not being stored correctly? Nobody's keeping?
Correct.
The Q-tips with the stuff on?
Correct. Completely unidentified. That's right.
It only goes over with a student I D number, not a name, not a birthday, not a social security number, not D N A that's staying forever.
Right, so nobody's saving that in a freezer?
No, in fact.
Only the swabs for the diagnostic, they'll save one, right?
Exactly.
But unidentifiable.
Exactly. So, for example, like, and, and actually, the swabs that go over with the pool testing aren't even identified, other than they're part of the pool.
Okay.
So all that U H G knows is, they will call and say, pool A, one, there's a positive. We then have that data that says, okay, these are the, these are the student I Ds that were in there. So they don't even have that, and those are discarded.
Okay.
That's right.
Oh, that makes more sense.
Yeah, so the research piece is really for the diagnostic piece that would come later, that students would give consent to.
Okay.
It's literally third-party logistics and statistics.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, which is why we're able to then, I mean, it's, it's, it sounds very complicated, but if, and, you know, when you go through the process, you can see it's really simple. It's a simple process to move a lot of people through for testing at the same time.
And it also costs the economics by ninety percent.
Sure.
Yes, which is, right.
Huge.
Right. So, I'll bring that question back.
Yes.
Any other questions? Lenny, Ellen, Owen?
It's a thorough document, and I have been supportive of this for a long time initially, because so many reasons. And, um, I like the fact that we get community participation, the bar raising. So as far as that's going, I'm liking that. Do we have any updates on if we'll be able to know what the P C R thresholds will be? Will they put that into the F A Qs? Because I thought I would be interested in, in that if they could.
Owen, what is it that you specifically need to know about the P C R thresholds?
Well, uh, Sarah, Dr. Prebble last week said that they were at forty. And what I'd be interested in is if the U H G testing would ever start going down in the P C R threshold. That kind of feedback, I think that would, I, I, I find.
So are you, so, oh, so are you just asking that if they changed their P C R threshold, that they just would notify us?
Yes.
Is that, okay.
I think that would, yes.
Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Okay.
Yeah, we'll pass that on.
Thank you.
One, one thing I'll say too, and we should definitely capture that, is, just in a, in a, in a generality of a perspective, right? They're going to be putting significant money and resources towards the test, so they're going to be, I think, in our camp of wanting to get the absolute best result. Because if they're flaring a bunch of false positives about their stuff, they're going to look really bad. And as a three hundred-plus-billion-dollar company doing a pilot, they don't want to look bad either. So, let's make sure that if that changes, that, that we were notified, but I'm hopeful that, I'm hopeful we're actually moving towards more advanced testing and more rapid response as soon as we can get it. Because there's only a couple sites even doing the default testing and analysis within twenty miles of here. So they're going to do the testing there, right? So I'm hopeful they stay at that level of fidelity or increase.
Yes, it's in their best interest.
Yeah.
To not have false positives.
Yeah.
And I think it's good for the community to know that. And I think it's good for the community to know also that, uh, U H G is actually going to have a loss with this while they're doing this with us. And so they're not making.
Absolutely.
And I think there's been some confusion in the community. They're not making money off of us. I think we really need to state that.
Yeah, no, that's a good point to me too.
I'll think that one time, to, to that point, um, Owen's good question is, we have put a. have put a max out of forty-five thousand dollars over this three to four-month phase one. That will cover disposables, that will cover, come the CARES Act money, that is not coming from the general fund, that is at zero margin, and they are buying it in bulk, so it will actually be at a lower cost than what we would pay to go out and buy swabs and associated PP and other materials. So we are paying only from federal funding, except toward getting kids back in school, not general fund. We are paying a limited amount, disposables only, we are paying at no margin, zero profit. Again, just to be clear for people, a three hundred and fifteen-billion-dollar market debt company does not move if you make ten or twenty grand, that's not the goal here. It's to apply federal dollars, because the goal is that if we want to pilot this across Minnesota to other public schools, or across the US other public schools, they need to also be able to follow the plan of being able to cover disposables from federal and state funding. So this is a very thoughtful, meticulous approach, and I'm glad you asked again, because we know working the committee together, that there is no margin, no profit, no additional dollars going to UHG of any sense.
Yeah, I think the other to follow up on that too, Owen, I know you didn't ask this specifically, but there is also no commitment from Edina Public Schools to have a continued relationship with UHG when this pilot ends.
Correct.
So if we find out that this pilot, we're like, wow, that, whatever we learn and we take from that, we can then assess, one, if we even have, I mean, COVID could be gone in three months, is there different rapid tests that are cheaper? Is there something from the state that's gonna roll out across the board to all the schools? So i- if we need to do anything for next year, we have a lot of information to pull from, and that, to me, is, is a huge part of this too, because more, the more information we have to make decisions and the data behind that, and was this, was this impactful? Can we keep the schools open? I mean, that's what we want, right? Like, we want to keep our kids in school, I'm gonna start crying so badly.
So the, so the question, the question, not you're asking, what you're asking, the question behind the question there is twofold, right? The first one is, you know, why, why would they do this, right? Like, if, why, why would a public company lose money doing this? And it's two issues, or two reasons. The first one is their mission statement. Their mission statement is to improve the overall health and wellness of the US population. So companies are required according to shareholder rights to make sure that they follow their mission, and follow, you know, that, that's what you're supposed to do. And the second one is, because they are ensuring such a large swath of the population, in addition to doing the public good piece, the hope is less people get COVID, less people get sick, less people cost money to the overall system. So sure, at the end of the day, it is part of their process to make sure that they do lower the overall cost of care, that will help them as a company, but it's as good an initiative to do the right thing as any I've seen. So again, no cost to Edina outside of the direct disposable cost coming from CARES Act funding, which is at zero margin, and actually at a discount, because we could not purchase the same disposables, and it's meant to be a pilot, that we can then get out to the rest of Minnesota as quickly as possible, and get out to the rest of the country. Because if, if, if you got ten kids and you don't know which ones have COVID, they all have to go home right now. Now if it's one kid, again, the rest can stay in school. And actually, you know, there was a question about bullying or shaming, well, that one kid wouldn't make the other nine go home now, if that was even a mental health wellness question. They'd say, oh, Timmy didn't make me go home, I'm still in school, I'm not mad at Timmy. So it actually helps to help in mental wellness, because I've seen that argument recently. So this really is a win-win for our community kids process, and, and I'm, I'm excited we're getting here, and it's gonna be clunky to start, so I'll just ask everybody to bear with us. But we talk about leading, we talk about excellence, this is an exact example of community and school, as you said, bar raising, coming together, thirty, forty volunteers, additions taking off time from work to come volunteer, trying to get and keep our kids in school. So I'm super excited, and I think that we're doing the right steps. But again, as you said, protocols change and, and health or testing limits or requirements were to decline, you and the community are notified immediately, that's a good point.
Lenny or Ellen?
I do not have any questions or comments. I think, well, I don't have any questions or comments.
Okay. Right, and I don't have any questions, and my only comment is, it was, I really appreciated the clarity of the protocol and being able to read that, it is not clear what our kids are going to be, what the process will be, and so I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, Ellen.
Right, thanks, Ellen.
Yeah, there's, there's no effort to hide the ball here, no one's saying that here, it's just super hard, there's just so many moving parts, and we've got an entire IRB, Institutional Review Board, and medical physicians at United reviewing it. So we'll try to keep transparency and clarity, open every step of the way, have all the documents clear, we'll have more formal communications coming out of the board this week, John and Mary, while you're working on that. And hopefully this is something that really helps our kids, and then we can expand. But I want to thank Julie for an incredible amount of work, thank you for your time on the committee, thank everybody else for being supportive of it, Erica setting it up, and um, and everybody, everybody was certainly.
Yeah, and this, in particular, this is a heavy lift for, a heavy lift, not, I would shouldn't say heavy lift, but what John said about our health services staff really embracing this idea, and they really are, I mean, they, they know that the impact of this will help with bringing COVID down and out of the schools, which is the goal. So I just want to give them a shout out, because their support in this makes a huge difference. So they're behind it.
So can I ask a question from a governance perspective?
Sure.
Since we're moving from what the committee was originally set up for, which was to bump into these testing programs and come up with a recommendation, do you recommend that we move out of that committee structure, that we no longer need the committee, since we're going into operational mode, or I want to make sure that we don't have scope creep with the committee itself?
Right.
I have a thought, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, I think that's, that's a, I think that's a really good discussion that we should have as a board. I think that part of what this plan was set up was to also do some continuous analysis of it.
Right.
And we have some community members and everybody who's, I mean, the committee had said, yes, we want to be part of kind of that analysis, it would make sense to continue that. I don't know what that looks like though, I, I guess we would need to have discussion, and I'd need direction on what that is.
I have a suggestion, strikingly. So I think, I think it's a good discussion to have, my thought is, I think the committee should stay in place for the next two months, and have weekly or every other week check-ins, just with, with the administration, see how things are going, because there's liaison perspective around how the contract is negotiated, negotiated, there's expectations in place, and there's feedback. So while it's becoming now operationalized and implemented, and the administration's now taking control of it, having kind of a slave oversight and partner committee, I think for two months makes sense, and we come back to the board a month from now with an update at a minimum, another month from now.
So I just want to make sure that since we are sort of getting that, the rest of the board is comfortable with the committee existing.
Right.
Just with the.
So that, that would be my recommendation from, from the committee.
Okay. Lenny?
Yeah.
So I would actually just keep the committee in place through the end of the school year, which is the time period, I think, that the testing is running, and that we revisit at that time.
Yep, that, I, it makes sense, yeah, that makes sense.
So I said, I said two months, you said three, I agree.
That makes sense, and it also gives us visibility into full or the impact, and to see how the volunteers are working, how it's working with kids, what our test results are like, what the effect on quarantining is. So I think that kind of dynamic feedback mechanism would be very helpful.
Yeah, and I think that, that was kind of the next, you know, we had put that in the plan that I think we presented in January about that, like, once we got to this point, is to stop and say, okay, where, where are those points and what, when will the update be? So we'll put a, the committee, we can put that together on what we're looking for and what we, what we can bring back, make sure that that's, and then get feedback from, you know, UHG, share their results and what they're seeing, so.
Yeah, and even though you didn't support in the vote, still, you've been incredibly helpful to the committee, and having all of our lenses is really helpful, so we can keep monitoring what's happening with different testing processes as a group on a monthly basis.
Yeah, for sure.
So I think we should definitely stay involved.
Yeah, okay, that sounds good, I just want to break.
Yeah, thank you, thanks for that clarification, that's helpful.
Yeah, that's a good question. And I did, we definitely have to thank people this time, we did it better last time, but there's lots of people we want to thank.
Well, go for it.
No, I, I don't have a lot to do.
You're gonna like that, it's for speed.
The whole, the whole committee, all, all the health of all.
Fair enough.
There's a lot of people that have worked on this, so it's been a pleasure to work with everybody on it.
Yeah.
Great. John, do you have any leadership updates?
Uh, no, I do not.